This is a recording of the Southwick Public Library Board of Trustees. It is December 13th at 7:00 PM. Who wants to do minutes tonight?
We'll do it.
Thank you.
It's my turn.
I don't do that.
Oh, I think. Public comments. Bert, you're on. Actually, let's do this. I, we skipped last month, so I'm a little rusty. Let's go around and so I'm Lynn Blair.
Michael.
Tracy Besware.
Tammy Sack.
The Salon.
Cindy Warner.
Jen Bowden.
And we have Bert Hanson joining us from the Agricultural Commission.
Yeah, I'm currently on the Agricultural Commission and also the Master Plan Advisory Committee. And I am actually a former library trustee, so this is.
Bringing me back.
So in the Agricultural Commission, we were planning what we're calling a Farmer's Forum that was actually going to be tomorrow, but that was too soon. So now it's going to be January 11th. I talked with Lynn. Right here. Very nice space. Turn out the farmers so we can actually have a conversation with them about how the Agricultural Commission can better work with them and support them. A little background. Our purpose is to encourage the pursuit of agriculture, promote agriculture-based economic opportunities and protect farmlands within the town. And we want to do that better. We want to be more proactive. Connect better with the farmers and find out how we can actually help them. So that's this Farmer's Forum. We've been doing some things that Michael was just asking about our brochure lists 12 farms and has a kind of overview of the farming economy in town. And we also have a Right to Farm flyer. Everybody knows that we're an agricultural community, but what does it mean to be right to farm? That means that farmers, you know, if you see a tractor on the road, you know, it's, it's okay. It's. So we're in the process of sending these out to realtors and some attorneys. So the process of new people coming into town, they say they will be clued into the fact that we're. So we've done most of your things. Now we want to sort of expand and get the farmers together, have a conversation with some specific questions and some sort of open-ended ones. So the specific ones would be, for example, Granby, Connecticut has an open farm day. They decided in September. And we used to have a tractor rally every spring that went away because of COVID. Now we want to start having some sort of, you know, a community event like that. And we thought that an open farm day like Granby has would be good. I've been kind of wrestling with, okay, when do you have it? You know, the farmers are busy. So I would talk to Tammy. I talked with Lynn over at Blossoming Acres the other day. She said that, you know, pretty much anytime except May or late September, October, when they're just crazed. But I want to, you know, talk to other farmers and see, you know, maybe weekend and late August, you know, when they have a lot of product to show or they could do demonstrations or, but we'll see. And then talk with them also about, again, how can we help them with debate? What's their awareness of grants that are available? What's an information resource for them? And can we possibly have a liaison with, with Town Hall? Folks have attention around going to Town Hall. And I was saying to Tammy, I really think I'll start that part of the meeting saying, how many of you like to go to meetings? Well, I'll go if you want me to. So we'll see where that goes, you know, and hopefully it'll be the start of better, better working relationship, better collaboration.
And then when I saw you're doing with someone from Yellowstone, the Zoom up in the garden, can the ag commission help promote that for you?
Yeah, absolutely. She's actually coming to do it in person this time. So we had her on Zoom last time. She's coming to do it in person. So yeah, absolutely. And I was thinking. It is the last Wednesday.
I'm sorry, who is this? That's coming?
Connie, she's from the Yellow Stonehouse CSA. And I'm blanking on her last name.
Darren Westfield though, right?
Yes. Yep.
Yeah.
When you first said that, Tammy, I thought it was something to do with Yellowstone.
She's great though. She had some really good info last year. I enjoyed it.
I was wondering how you're defining farmer, if it's specifically the ones that are promoting as a business in town or if it's, yeah, how are you defining farmer?
Well, that's a good question. Because what we're really about are the commercial farmers. There are a lot of, a lot of folks in town have, you know, you know, five or six acres, you know, a couple of animals. And certainly that's love that, you know, but what we're really about is promoting the commercial farmers.
And then.
Saving that space.
We also want to look into different, probably the topics for the homestead farmers or people that may be interested in someday. Just kind of what to expect. Like I know you're doing the, or she's doing the how to plant a vegetable garden. We were talking about climate change, just kind of like ag education.
I was thinking too, now that Bert mentioned it, I mean, you know, we could, we could potentially do like a program or something on grant writing for people because or, or even if you, if you did something online of like compiling all the available grants out there for farmers. I mean, you know, we could publicize that here, have it available on our website, have like a physical list. So that if people were looking for something, they had a place to come to. Cause I know you don't really have like an office office, but if we had something here that they could stop by and use then.
Yeah.
That's awesome. Excellent idea.
We have a couple of file cabinets.
And our signs, markups.
Yeah. Very good. And I'm sorry, I missed what, when is the Yellowstone House?
January 25th, 6:30 PM.
I only know because I took a picture of it the other day.
Okay, well, this is good. Thank you. I just wanted to clue everybody in since you're generously hosting us. Working together to promote.
Yeah. And touch, touch base with us maybe like after the holidays, you know, and we can talk about like a grant writing program or something. Some way we can kind of compile the resources for people and
Yeah.
and have those somewhere online. And we could make it to those of our pages or just yours or whatever works, you know.
What time on the 11th is the meeting?
Oh, it's six. Six to 7:30, I'm thinking. We'd have, you know, snacks and beverages, snacks from Blossoming Acres. And you know, even if you're not a farmer, you're certainly welcome to come. I was happy to hear that Lynn is actually from a farm family.
Yes, I have no skill, but I'm a farm family.
Any other like questions, comments, thoughts?
We're looking forward to working with you Bert.
Great. I'll leave these, you can, I didn't want to hand them out because if you hand out printed material, people try to read it. So I'll do these.
Are these offset like if, if we have extras and can hand these out to patrons?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I was going to ask it.
Does anybody want? Send them around and any extras I can put out.
Okay, well, I'd love to kind of catch up with all the library business, but I have a meeting tomorrow night and Thursday night, so.
You're off the hook.
See you tomorrow.
Thank you Bert.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I'll leave the minutes.
Nice to see you Brian Buss.
Okay, so we are on to approval of September minutes. I think remember if I sent these out by email, but I made copies for tonight. Do we remember who did the October minutes?
I can tell you who is here.
Then I think we'll just have to table the.
Oh, it said September minutes, Tammy will transcribe them.
Yeah.
October minutes were done by Jen.
That's scary.
Did I take notes of everything?
No, that I don't have any.
There was, there was a recording online, so if you have time to do it, that's great. If you don't, my, my schedule isn't too bad this week and next week, so I'm happy to transcribe.
How long can you wait for them?
Oh, we, we can wait till the next meeting. Yeah, we don't, we don't need them right away.
I can do the extra minutes after my son's commute stuff.
Yeah, I can, I'll send you the recordings.
Thank you.
Yeah. And if I recall, I think the last meeting was pretty short, so it shouldn't be too, too bad. I think we were in and out. Okay, so we're going to table the October minutes till next meeting and everybody has a copy of the September minutes.
I apologize.
No, no worries. Any comments or changes or any, any updates we need to make?
I feel we don't have notes in front of me, but did we talk about having another library faculty this year who's going to speak out?
Oh, yes, I think that.
We voted against it.
Okay.
Yeah, we talked about rotating it with the three of us.
Thank you.
It was, it was offered up, but we didn't feel that Lynn should have to rearrange everybody's schedules to, to accommodate our meetings.
Well, that makes sense. I just didn't remember.
Okay. Town holiday party. Who made this beautiful flyer? Um, it came from the Town Hall, so I'm not sure who did.
It doesn't have an actual menorah on it.
It's the same wire they've used for years. They just changed the date and time and in this case, the location.
They should change the icon.
On that same topic, you know, there was an issue in Farmington, Connecticut about the school calendar.
Yes.
Well, there was a thing on the library in Connecticut about a Christmas tree. And taking down the Christmas tree at the library and they were having a big, that's the worst thing on the agenda. Was the Christmas tree at the library? I think it was like, we're still Connecticut or something.
What was the issue?
They felt that it shouldn't belong in the library.
As a Jewish person, I have a problem with a Christmas tree in the library. I just think that if you're going to put something Jewish on there, it should be right.
Any updates, changes, or do we want to vote on the minutes?
That's good to me.
Was absent, so. So that, I think that, well, we'll, we'll say the two thumbs up was a motion by Jen.
Yes. This wonderful.
Tammy seconds.
Okay, the October's table till next meeting, so we have.
We have October.
Do you have to vote to?
Oh, yes.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
It's unanimous.
Yeah, there, you can tell by the very top left corner which month is which. Hope you like numbers. So our October and November, we're looking good. I mean, we're still over 4,000 circulations a month. Yeah, so it, it tends to dip a little bit in November and December, I think with the holidays. But I mean, it's still, it's still at 4,400. So that's, that's really good. We're still getting new cards pretty strong. Yeah, all of, all of our numbers, yeah, pretty great to me. I'm happy with them. Questions or comments, anything? Have you noticed?
We will talk into the digital.
Yeah. So. So what we did when I did a report, and it's coming around for everybody. The dates, I did, I did this back in November, so the dates were July 1st to November 1st. And then it breaks down all the categories and the circulations. So the total checkouts were 2,746 in the span of July to November. So I mean, you know, if, if digital circulations are half of what our physical circulations are, I think that's pretty good. We are trying to really make people aware of our digital, digital offering. So I'm doing two sessions in January, one in the morning and one in the night because people get like devices for Christmas and the holidays and everything. So we'll do a little session to kind of introduce people who are interested, do a little one-on-one help if they have questions about their new devices, anything like that. November statistics, the old business, holiday hours and closings. We finalized the holiday schedule. So we will be closed Saturday, the 24th and then Monday, the 26th and Tuesday, the 27th, as well as Saturday, the 31st and then January 2nd. The Town Hall is doing something slightly opposite. They are going to be closed on the 23rd and open on the 27th. But the kids still have school on the 23rd. So if there's, you know, we don't want to be closed if there's kids coming down. And the staff voted to, to do the 27th. So that will be our schedule.
So you're, so the 27th, you're closed, 23rd, you're?
23rd, 23rd, the Town Hall is closed. We are open. Yeah, so it's the 24th, 26th and 27th. And then the 31st and January 2nd.
Be a good short week for you that week.
Three days.
I know. That's great.
So those could be a very busy three days or very quiet three days. We never really know. Okay. And so the new business, the strategic plan to update you guys, we've had two meetings so far. I have a draft report that I'm just kind of making it look nice and catching any typos or anything at this point. I sent it around for the staff to review, to take a look at. And at the next meeting, I'm going to send out a poll to everybody. We're going to try to meet in late January, early February to go over the draft. And then I also think, I was, I was talking with somebody from the Massachusetts Library System because somebody in the strategic planning meeting noticed that our mission statement on our website is a little out of date. And what Christie from the Mass Library System said is that the mission statement can be done by the trustees. It can be done by your strategic planning committee. It can be done either way. So I think if you guys are okay with it, I'm just going to have our strategic planning committee kind of do a mission statement at our last meeting because they've been so heavily involved with all of this and the survey and everything that I think it just makes sense. You guys will get the ultimate final decision once we give the plan over to you. I'm hoping to have it for your February meeting for everybody to vote on. So if that is fine with everybody, then, then that's, that's how we'll proceed. And, and then I sent everybody, the survey is a very, very long document, but I sent everybody the survey results that we got. So we got, we got quite a few responses. And I don't know if any, anything popped out to you guys or if anybody has any comments on anything. But we had three wonderful volunteers who handed surveys out outside of the town election on November 8th, I think it was. So we got quite a few responses from that. And it was nice, we got quite a few responses from people who said they don't have a library card. Usually the survey responses all say, oh yeah, we come to the library all the time. And it's like 100% do you come to the library? Yes, we don't get anything from the, the people who don't. So we got quite a few who didn't, which was really nice this time around. So if there are no questions, comments or anything on that, then I shall move on. Okay. So we are in the. Yes.
I don't even recognize my own handwriting. I'm a printer, so that's why. Okay.
Perfect. The next thing, our young adult services librarian, she gave her notice. So she will be leaving, she gave us a couple of weeks' notice, so she'll be leaving January 3rd. So the position is now open. We've posted internally for two weeks and the closing date will be December 10th, this Friday at 10:00 AM. If I don't get any internal applicants, then I'll post it externally. The 16th, sorry, December 16th. Yep. That's what, December 16th at 10. That's what I was going for. Yes, so it closes Friday at 10:00. And if, if I don't have any internal applicants, then we'll, we'll search outside. It's one of our four full-time positions, so we want to get that filled.
How long was she?
About five years.
She was here with us, oh really, that long?
And then I do just have a quick. It's technically a form, but since it's part of the policy handbook, we'll just send it around to everybody. So basically our library card registration form, nothing has changed other than the addition at the very bottom. The friends, after the strategic planning committee, I spoke with the friends about traditionally the library links have only been emailed to people who are a friend of the library. And we think that was kind of limiting our reach with sending out the newsletter by email. So basically it's just a paragraph up from the signature. I just added a line, so when somebody signs up for a card and they give us their email address, they can check that they would like to be, like to have their email address added to our email list so they can sign up for the adults, teen families and the library links. I did cross off children's because Molly had, she, there, there makes no sense to have a children's and then a family's. She's sending out the same thing to two lists, so we just merged it into one and made it families. So minor change, but that way we can pick up on people when they sign up for a card to try to get some more users for our email list. Any questions or anybody want to approve or vote?
Want you to approve the library card registration. Tracy. Sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah, children.
Yep. And then, oh, sorry, everybody said vote. I, I'm on a roll tonight.
Hi.
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 Okay, and then I sent everybody else out by email a long document for the update on our fiscal year 2024 action plan with the caveat at the top that we are working on our strategic plans, so things in this may change. We needed to submit this by the beginning of December, so it will care, our, our new strategic plan won't take action until July 1st. So this will kind of carry us through the next six months to just make sure, we have to have one of these every year to make sure our plan stays active.
Just going back for a moment to the YA librarian. Assuming there are no candidate, internal candidates. And that, that makes a big difference. Is there anything you think you'll have to do differently or what's happening in '22, '23 versus hiring three or four years ago?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I think when, when we're looking at hiring for that position, we've had a little bit of difficulty trying to get candidates for our circulation positions because the pay is so low that it's not comparable to other businesses, even other libraries. But I think with a full-time benefited position with, with pretty good hours, I think we'll have some good luck getting some good candidates. And it's a good, it's a good starting job to get kind of yourself, yourself in the door for library work. So I'm, I'm thinking if we put it out on, you know, Simmons, on the MBLC, we should be able to get a couple of good candidates. Did that answer your question?
Yeah. I was just curious because you've kind of been through war and hell in the last three or four years.
Yes.
With, with the virus and trying to replace people when people would retire, et cetera.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I'm thinking it's, it's a really nice position. I mean, I did it years ago. It's a nice position, good hours, a lot of flexibility and a lot of room to be creative. So I'm thinking, you know, it's a great kind of next step up for a lot of people. So I'm, I'm hoping and I'm confident that we can find somebody, somebody really good for the position. Were there any comments or anything on our action plan? Super exciting. But um, yeah, we're, so we're just updating with the current goals and our, and our current plan, which will be superseded in July when our new one officially comes out. The next thing on the agenda was a question about, long story short, there's been kind of a discussion on one of the library email lists. There was a presenter, we, we never had him here. He performed at other Massachusetts libraries, who it was found out that he was kind of doing some not so nice things in his personal life. And the discussion on the email list has kind of been, should we be query checking our presenters? And my children's staff and I were really talking and I said I'd bring it up at the meeting and to see if you guys had any input. There's a couple of things that I think could cause an issue. Number one, I think it's a lot of work for the town to have to quarry check every time we have an outside presenter come in to do a program. And number two, I always make sure my staffer, staff are always in the room. The only time, you know, if it's an adult program, I'm sometimes in and out helping at the circulation desk, because it's an adult program. But anytime we have a program with children or teens, we always have a staff member in the room, kind of supervising, keeping an eye on things, you know.
What do you think, and what do the staff think?
I mean, the staffs, the staffs think it's, you know, it's not entirely necessary if we always have somebody in the room. And that way, we're, we're keeping an eye on things. And I also do think it might be kind of a strain on the town hall if we were to have to send over a quarry check every time we're having somebody come in to do a program. It might be a little cumbersome.
Do you have to pay for that, too?
I think they have to pay for it.
Which would end up out of our budget.
Most likely.
Right.
Yep.
Here's your W four, here's your quarry form.
Yeah, 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 and I think some, from my, from my reading of this, you know, a few libraries are like, yeah, we really considering this most, or, you know, if, if we have staff supervision in the room. Right.
Yeah, I think that's the best, make sure somebody's there at all times.
Somebody's always there. If somebody has to leave, they just tap another staff member, say, hey, can you go in for five minutes, just keep an eye on things.
And one of the big things, too, is if we end up having a quarry check, and then it, they don't get it done in time, or whatever, and you've put in this program, then you're looking at, you know, I mean, but obviously, safety first, but.
Yeah, of course.
You know, but if you have people, you know.
The quarry check also only covers the state that you're checking in.
I guess, and I mean, we get.
We're just so close to Connecticut that.
Okay. Yeah, that's true as well. Yeah, so if everybody's fine with, with that practice, then we'll just continue as we have been of just, you know, having a staff member present during any, any type of programs, to keep an eye on things.
And is the staff member empowered to stop the program if they felt it wasn't appropriate?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. We, we have never had any issues. This is just kind of a precaution, you know, after it happened with this one presenter, it got everybody thinking in there. I mean, he didn't do anything at a library program. It was something in his personal life that kind of came to light that made some people think, you know. So, yeah, yeah, staff are definitely empowered, too, if they sit, if they see something that's, yeah, absolutely. Okay. Next thing. Let's see, is the copier. So I wanted to run this by you guys, since it is such a, a larger purchase. We would obviously probably have to use our state aid account for it. Our staff copier, we have until, we've had it for so long that they're not going to extend our, our contract past the end of the fiscal year. So we could still keep it and use it, but if something breaks, we're really in trouble. So they gave us some numbers that, you know, are, are estimates, they may change, because I think Heather got these a month or two ago, that we can potentially purchase a new copier or lease one. And we were, we were thinking about the pros and cons. So a purchase price, the estimate Heather got was about five thousand eight hundred dollars. I mean, which is not, you know, we use the thing on the daily, so it's not, it's not that crazy. And then the, the lease price is a sixty-month lease at a hundred and thirty-two dollars a month. So we were thinking, you know, since we did purchase it last time, it would make sense for us to just purchase a new one again.
This would be one thirty-two times sixty.
Who's got a calculator? I don't know where the calculator is on this thing. So it would be more to, more to lease.
So is this the list price, or is this off like that state educational schedule?
Yeah, I believe Heather looked it up with the, with the state, with the state pricing. So, and I'm thinking, I'm thinking usually when you lease something, I'm thinking that it might even add to the cost, because usually when I, when you be something, they'll be like, they want you to buy this type of printer ink from this place, and so on. So, I mean, if we buy it, yeah, if we buy it, then we can just, you know.
Go anywhere you want.
The only thing, lease versus, of course, it's two thousand, that's quite a bit more. I was going to say, if something breaks, and you own it.
Well, we still have a contract that we pay for.
You're a maintenance contract.
Yeah, we have a maintenance contract.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, either way.
The nice thing.
That's why she was saying, the maintenance contract, they won't extend on the current one.
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
We could keep using our current one, but if something went really wrong, that could get expensive. And it's ten years old, so. Yeah, so if you, if you are all fine, then I will use state aid funds to look into a purchase. Probably at the, depending on how soon, you know, things are ordering out, maybe we'll look at it in the springtime and kind of get something in order for when our current one expires. Do you guys need to vote on the purchase, or?
No.
Yeah, but the price may change, so. Okay, next thing I have is, we were awarded our state aid. And the first check, it is, Cindy, tell me when you're ready for the number.
Okay.
Yep, eleven thousand eight sixty-nine and six cents. Which is, I, I read was the, was the largest, it's yours, and the largest state aid award in a long time, so. That's good, and more than covers our copy of purchase, so that's good. So, yeah, just, we should, and we should be getting a, a second check.
Usually.
Equal or lesser value. Usually it's a little more, sometimes usually about the same. I never really know, until they tell us.
And what does that come in?
Sometime in the springtime. So this, this one should be arriving at the town hall. Anytime now, it may have already arrived, and the next one should be sometime, I think they usually do it like March or so. Okay, and then the last thing I had on here the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget process. So I'm working on getting the final numbers for a couple of things for our budget, so we're ready to go whenever they send us the information to submit it. As far as staffing goes, I've been working with the town and the union president, because we'd really like to, I kind of took a look at our staffing and kind of was thinking, where could we really use the help? And there's a bunch of places we could use the help, and I think we could definitely use the help in our circulation department. And they are the front-facing people, they are the most busy with day-to-day traffic. So what I wanted to do was to take one of our four circulation positions and morph it into, I call it a borrower services librarian. So they would be somebody who kind of supervises and oversees the day-to-day of the circulation department. And I made up a draft schedule, I have a draft job description. Normally, our circulation staff are eighteen hours. We've kind of made this one out to be like twenty-nine and a half. If you don't ask, you don't get, so we're just going to try to go for it this year and, and see. I mean, our circulation has been up, we're busy. We can definitely use the help. And, you know, we're, we're working on the process. So just for everybody's information, we're working out the details, and, and we'll have that one on the budget request to the town to see if we can get a little bit of help with that.
What kind of reaction have you got so far for town hall?
Uh, no, no reaction from town hall. They've been helpful. I've been working with the union president here on staff, and they've been helping me. We kind of came up with a draft job description. They came up with, obviously, a, a new salary, because we wouldn't be paying them the same circulation librarian rate. So we just figured that out today, and next steps are just seeing what else we need to do before we put it on the budget.
So did this include one of the three
Yes.
circs from eighteen hour to twenty-nine and a half?
Yeah, yep, yep. And, and also, I worked out the schedule to kind of kill two birds with one stone. So we have that position, but that position would also work into the evenings. So we have evening coverage, if everything worked out. The way I kind of looked at it is, is that, you know, I have them on two evenings a month, or not a month, two evenings a week. And so they would work through shift change, because we always have the issue of there's the morning staff, and then there's the afternoon staff, and sometimes things don't. But if there's one person whose kind of focus is to make sure that everybody's aware of any changes or anything like that, they can handle the busy after-school hours, they can handle evenings. So that would be really nice to have additional help in the evenings as well, because honestly, there, when our evening circulation librarian takes a break for about fifteen minutes, we don't have a circulation librarian at night, and so we need, you know, we have other staff filling in, of course, but we need to have extra support and coverage. So, we're going for it, and we'll see, we'll see. I mean, I think we've, we've got a, a pretty decent case, so I'm hopeful. I've, I already have a staff member who is interested, and she would. Yep, yeah, that was, that was the biggest thing. I wanted to make sure that we had somebody who was interested before I kind of took it any further. Because if I had none of the four were interested, well, then we need to look at another option, but one of the four, we spoke to the person with the most seniority, and they are interested, so. That's great. All right, and then I, I should have, depending on when the budget stuff comes through, maybe have something for the January meeting or February. I'm not, I'm never sure when they're going to send it to me, so. One of those two will kind of have the final numbers to talk about. And then in all my talking, I forgot to just do my, my short little director's report spiel, so. Based on the strategic planning committee, everybody's really talking about a marketing plan, so I'm kind of working on that in the new year, putting together some type of marketing plan or strategy for us. We are doing a pop-up library at the Southwood Village. I'm going to start doing that every other month on a Wednesday morning, and just.
It's definitely some publicity for that.
Yeah.
I, I read it somewhere.
Yeah, I was going to say, I read it somewhere, too.
There was a nice article in the Penny Saver we wrote up, I think that was it, with, with Tony and Richard who delivered.
Oh, yeah, that was a great article.
That was really nice. Yeah, she did a really good job. And then, kind of based, based off that, what I've been doing is, everybody's been saying in the strategic plan that we really need to work on our marketing, so I've been kind of taking it week by week and saying, you know, okay, this week, I'm really going to market books on the go, which one is what I did that week. So I did posts about it on our social media. I sent the article to paper. You know, this week, I'm doing different posts on our local history collection, which is kind of easier taking it in bite-sized pieces, as opposed to just everything we do is so overwhelming. If I'm like, this week, I'm focusing just on ancestry, and I'll do some posts on that, maybe a video or something, and just doing it in bite-sized pieces is a little bit easier. And then last thing, I just used our computer replacement schedule. We use some state aid funds to replace and upgrade for computers. So we're waiting for the town technology guy to come over and get them all set up for us, because we have some.
So you've already got.
Yep, yeah, we got them delivered from Wally. And, yeah, we just need Jim to come over and set it up. So we've got four, because the four we're replacing are from twenty fifteen, so they're getting a little bit out of date. And that's it for me. Not bad on timing.
Good job. There was a lot. I thought it was going to be a lot longer.
Oh, no.
Yeah. I called the order of the meeting to be adjourned.
Twenty seconds.
Whatever.
I'll do it some favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, all right, I'm going to end.